Good evening, everyone. It's called to order this Eldorado City Commission meeting for August 5, 2019. Should we have roll call, please?
Mayor Haines.
Present.
Commissioner Guthrie is absent this evening. Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Baggie.
Here.
Commissioner Wilkins.
Present.
Thank you. Next would be invocation led by Father John Lanseth of the St. John's Catholic Church. Please lead us in invocation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Heavenly Father, your son, Jesus Christ, came into this world not to be served, but to serve. As this meeting convenes on this August evening, we ask your blessings upon these city commissioners of Eldorado and upon their support staff. They have been called by the citizens of this community not to be served, but to serve. Their willingness and their commitment to service is a blessing to all of us who call Eldorado our home. We pray that the decisions that they make will build a solid foundation for the future growth of our families and of our community. We ask your blessings as well upon the spouses and the children of these commissioners who also make sacrifices for us. May every thought, word, and action of ours always begin with your holy inspiration. Bless, oh Lord, the work of our hands. We ask that you hear and answer this prayer according to your divine will. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next, we have special guests with us tonight to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, the Boy Scout Troop 222. Would you come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Wonderful. Would you tell us a little bit about the troop and say your name?
My name's Trendon Todd.
Landen Craigmyle.
My name is Nicholas Williams.
Katie Cooper.
Mackenzie Marshall.
Lizzie Williams.
Joseph Sterns.
Davion Finley.
James Stein.
Calvin Cox.
Angel Savage.
Brody Todd.
Evening, Mayor Haines, Commissioners. Thank you very much. I'm Frank Williams. I'm the Assistant Scout Master for Troop 222. It's an honor and a privilege to be here tonight with you to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Just a note, we're sponsored by the First United Methodist Church here in Eldorado, and thanks for all your support for the Scouts.
Thank you very much. Will please, audience, rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Scouts. Thanks for doing that. Next on, without proclamations or recognitions, next would be personal appearances. We have, I think, Jordan Buxton from the Chamber of Commerce to talk about the Butler County Act program.
Good afternoon. Good evening, Commissioners. Got some for you here.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
I'm Sarah Heffkin, and I am the Director of the Augusta Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for taking the time to hear about what we've been working on to enhance workforce in Butler County. I'm here today as part of the Butler County Act Task Team. We're a team comprised of Augusta, Eldorado, and Andover Chambers, Butler Community College, and the Workforce Center. We have started an initiative to have Butler County become an ACT work-ready community. That means we will have a leadership team consistently working on our county's need to fill jobs, retain talent, and close the skills gap in our communities. Our vision is to provide a revolutionary workforce which attracts and retains business, industry, and talent for Butler County. Our mission is to develop collaborative relationships which stimulate the Butler County workforce and economy. That's where you come in. We are visiting with Eldorado, Augusta, and Andover elected officials to introduce you to our initiative and garner your support. The initiative to become a work-ready community can take up to two years, and that process is being funded by Butler County and Butler Community College. All we are asking today is that you will recognize and support the task team as we venture to become a work-ready community. So, how are we going to get there, right? We talked about how we're working towards becoming a work-ready community. It is an ACT program. We just recently got back from a boot camp. As a team, we were kind of assembled from all over the county. I do that all the time. And I talk with my hands, too, so. We were assembled from all individuals around the county in our different communities. Obviously, workforce has always been a consistent issue. What are we doing to prepare our future? What are we doing to help businesses? What are we doing with the students? This is a way that we are working towards bridging all of those things together. We're very happy to present to you guys today that we do have the partners in education with us. Obviously, we've got Butler Community College here represented, but we've also got Eldorado and Circle High Schools, Augusta High School, and Andover High Schools that are on board with us. We are still reaching out to visit with other schools in the county, and we will report back with that. But what is it, right? So, ACT pays for a college assessment test. They also pay for what's called a National Career Readiness Certificate exam. They're given back-to-back two days, and in Kansas, the Kansas Department of Education pays for every junior in the state of Kansas to take these exams. One's being used very well, the other one not so much, that National Career Readiness Certificate, which is going to highlight their ability to read on applied math, graphic literacy, and workplace documents. Those tests are not given a score, but rather a level. You're given a bronze, silver, gold, or platinum level. Now, those tell you what you're capable of doing. So, say we've got a contractor who needs work or a job. That doesn't mean that individual is going to know how to do the job, but they have the skills and the knowledge readily available to learn that job. So, as a task team, we're working on providing this information and educating the students and the parents on what the certificate means. So, as we're working with the college, all these high schools, to implement and really promote this exam, we're also working on educating the businesses because this certificate needs to mean something, right? And so, we're working with bringing those businesses on board by asking them to either recognize or recommend that certificate. So, if you have applicants and someone comes in with a certificate and you see they've got a silver score, you could say that, one, you recognize that, that certificate means something, or, two, you could recommend that, which means that applicant would take priority over others without. So, as a community, in order to reach this goal, we have different levels, or, excuse me, goals that we have to obtain. I'm going to go over those a little bit. We have what's called an emerging workforce. That's going to be all of our students. That's coming out of junior college and also the high school level. In two years, as a county, we need to have 654 students take this exam. As of right now, we have 252. We also have an area called the transitioning workforce, which are those who are leaving that post-secondary education and are entering the workforce. As a county, we have to have 880 in two years. We currently have 835 workforce, those current job seekers, adult job seekers. In two years, we have to have 697. We currently have 807. We also have to have businesses recognize this. It has to mean something. In Butler County, we have to have 67 employers that recognize this certificate. Right now, we just started with a lunch-and-learn that was geared towards educators and kind of civic leaders, and we have 10 businesses, and those are mostly comprised of schools and education systems. We are not alone in this. We have other counties around us that are working towards this. McPherson County, Potawatomi County, Geary County, Cherokee, Labette are all counties who are going through this process and are currently working to expand even farther. So, what we are looking to do is to create a singular conversation in our community and in our county that talks about workforce. So, when we speak to the counselors at the high school and those superintendents and those parents, we want to be saying the same things about our workforce here in our community as what we're saying to our businesses. This is our attempt and goal at really investing in our youth, investing in our jobs, investing in our businesses, and the workforce. Now, let Bill kind of speak on how the college...
I'm Bill Rankinbaum, the Vice President of Student Services at Butler. I'm also serving on as a higher education representative for the Northwest District of the ACT State Organizations. At one of the meetings that I attended, they brought up work-ready communities and what that means for the communities as a whole. And for me, what it said was individuals or counties who are work-ready communities are more likely to attract businesses and more apt to keep businesses in their communities and hire those students or those employees because they have those work-ready skills. My thought was, this is a prime time to bring this initiative to Butler County because the state is paying for work keys for all high school juniors now. So, we've already got that part started. It's just a matter of pulling all of this initiative together. It's a great opportunity for the college to partner with the local communities in Butler County to help them come forward with a joint effort to increase our work-ready community and to have jobs and careers for people in this county. So, that's why we're here.
And I will say that we're not introducing anything new. This is something that's been around for a while. One of our local employers here, Holly Frontier, requires that all of their applicants take this exam. So, we have a major organization and successful business here that has shown that this works. Their retention rates are incredible, and we just want to encourage other businesses to give it a try. We appreciate your time. Do you have any questions?
Great. Have questions?
Are there any specific skills that this test targets, or is it general skills, nothing?
Nope. It is, you know, that could go into a little bit more specific with utilizing workforce in some of their screenings and testings, but as the ACT, this exam alone, it tests on that applied math, graphic literacy, and workplace documents. So, your ability to compute basic equations, your ability to read content, and then to infer it.
Who came up with the number of students you had to have at secondary, post-secondary, and so on?
So, we submitted our county's information based upon the local high schools that we have and submitted that to ACT, and based upon the county size, that's how those goals were given to us. Does anyone have any other questions?
When you said, I don't remember the number, the first one where you have 200 and some, and you need...
654.
Is that cumulative, or is that...
In the next two years.
In two years?
Yep, and it adds on, yes, sir. So, it won't start over.
It's not like you start over every year, no.
Nope, and this is 252. You know, I will say that before the 18, 19 numbers were just submitted, we only had 56. So, we jumped from 56 to 252, and that's without anybody really pushing this at all. Now, we've got superintendents, principals, counselors at the table, all working together so that each school is also relaying the same information and figuring out how we can build career readiness information and curriculum into their actual curriculum.
As a former educator, I appreciate the fact that it's not just the schools that are doing this, that it's actually the chamber is involved because they realize the need for, let's face it, vocational training and education. So, I appreciate that fact.
Well, I appreciate the chamber's role as a bridge between the employer and the school because we certainly talk a lot about workforce development, and I think this is a pretty neat tool to call attention to it and to get into the schools, get into the junior, get to the junior class.
Yeah. We really want to be able to see these students not just have the career readiness skills, but obtain the internships, mentorships, apprenticeships. We're kind of working as a town here in Eldorado to build a list of the jobs and career opportunities that are available. And so, I do want to say before we get off here is that, you know, we've introduced this, but we haven't officially had a launch for this yet, and we will be. In your packet, you have an invitation September 12th. We will be inviting the entire Butler County to come and join us. We'll have some local representatives from other counties who have been there and done this come and be speaking with us, so we would hope that you guys could join us.
Sure, yeah.
All right. Thank you guys very much.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for your work. Next, we have Tapas the Sharp, Holly Frontier Celebration Chair. We have a Holly Frontier Celebration coming up this weekend.
Yes, we actually started yesterday, so we started yesterday with the Miss Frontier pageant, and I have Naomi Galindo here with me. She was our 2019 Miss Frontier, and I'm going to let her speak in a few minutes, but wanted to tell you a little bit about the festival. The remainder of the festival will begin Friday evening at 5:30. That's when gates open. We'll have mutton busting at 6:00 PM, the bull ride at 8:00 PM, and Kyle Park, who's a Texas country artist, in concert after the bull ride. Saturday starts bright and early, 8:00 AM, with the Hall and Ball's 10K, 5K, and One Mile Fun Run. At 9:00 AM, we'll have a parade downtown. Last I heard, we had somewhere around 35 or 40 entries, so it should be quite a spectacle, I hope. At 10:00 AM, we have lots of things getting ready to start. We will have the Arts and Crafts Fair at East Park. We will also have the cornhole tournament beginning at East Park at 10:00 AM, and the craft fair, or, I'm sorry, kids' corral. The Kids' Corral is an event that the Oil Museum and the festival are putting on together. So, the events will be throughout East Park and the Oil Museum. We'll have Quarters in the Hay. The tractor pull registration starts at 10:00 AM, the kitty tractor pull, sorry, starts at 10:00 AM and begins at, and the actual event begins at 11:00. We'll also have lots of games and ice cream at 1:00. All of these events are free, so we encourage children to come down and have a good time. At noon on Saturday, the gates open at the festival, and for the first year, we will be hosting the Junior Ranch Rodeo, and so, we're going to see lots of local kids participating in the Junior Ranch Rodeo. At 6:00 PM, again, we'll have mutton busting. There's still spots open for anyone who wants to register for that. 7:00 PM, we'll have the Adult Ranch Rodeo, and after the Adult Ranch Rodeo, we'll have Jason Callahan. He's a local favorite. He'll be in concert Saturday evening. Sunday morning, we will have Cowboy Church, and that will complete the festival. We had to cancel the trail ride this year because it is just still too wet at the lake, and they are not encouraging trail rides at the moment. I just want to take a moment to say that this year, our tickets have been reduced to $10 for the whole weekend, so $10 gets all adults in, 12 and over, for the whole weekend. Children, still $5, and under 5 get in free. Want to take a moment also to thank our sponsors, Holly Frontier and Custafab are our platinum sponsors this year, and our in-kind platinum sponsors, CDH, the city of Eldorado, and our parent organization, Eldorado Main Street. And then, as well, thank our volunteers. And then, I just wanted to give Naomi a moment to introduce herself. You'll be seeing her around town a lot this year, and so, wanted to give her a moment to tell you about her.
All right.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Naomi Galindo. I am the 2019 Miss Frontier, and I'm so excited to be working with the community this year. I've been part involved with Miss Frontier for the last two years. I was, I started as Miss Frontier 2017, and I've been competing ever since. My platform is Foreign Language Education K through 12, and I'll be working with Deanna to kind of like promote my platform around the community, and, you know, if I get an opportunity to speak elsewhere, to promote it then.
Great.
I'll also be attending Butler Community College as well. Forgot to mention that, yeah.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The bull ride is only going to be one night.
Yes, the bull ride will be Friday night only this year. When the Junior Ranch Rodeo reached out to us, we, as a committee, decided to make Saturday all about ranch rodeo, and so, they have promised a good show, and we will hope to hold them to that and hope to hold them to no rain. That's what I'm praying for right now.
Great. Well, it's a week of activities, and it's going to be a fun weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you for the passes. These are for Saturday?
Yes, those are for all weekend.
All weekend? Thank you.
The rodeo was more exciting.
Next on our agenda is public comments. Anybody from the audience wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Two items on our consent agenda. packets were mailed out earlier, or actually, late last week, so. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? If there are none, I entertain a motion.
Move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Having no old business, what I will say now is, I know that the Scouts probably have their own meeting to get to and get started with. I believe, if I remember right, it's around 7:00 o'clock. You guys are welcome to stay, or feel free to exit and convene your own meeting. Thank you again for leading us in the flag salute. We look forward to you guys doing it more often in the future.
Thank you, Mayor.
New business, 2020 budget hearing. Spit that out. We'll let David talk to us. This is something that we have been working on for a couple of months, right?
Well, the good news is, I know that the Boy Scouts are leaving to go to their meeting, and not because of the content matter of the hearing. So, the 2020 budget hearing, this is the final, well, basically, the final step for, I guess there's two steps left. We have the budget hearing that we'll have tonight, and then, the commission has to approve the budget, and then, once that's done, we'll certify it to the county, and we'll be done with the budget season. Budget will go into effect January 1st, but will be done, in essence, with developing the 2020 budget. So, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to go quickly through this presentation that I have prepared. It's a summary of everything that we've been discussing with the last several weeks and months, and then, we'll open the budget hearing and take any comments or questions the public may have, and then, with that, we'll see where the commission stands on that. So, the 2020 budget, as currently published, will have a total budget authority of $32.9 This includes total budgeted revenues of $25.8 million against total budgeted expenses of $28.5 million. So, overall, the overall budget, we will, we're planning to spend $28.5 million, although we, this is a plan, and so, we likely will not spend $28 million. More than likely, we'll spend less than $25 million, but we've put in everything that we think may happen next year. The budget is somewhat difficult because we do have to budget or forecast out about, in some cases, up to nine months ahead of time where we think we're going to be, and so, to some degree, it is an educated look at where we think we're going to be, and then, we try to control our spending and watch our revenues pretty closely to make sure that that happens. The other thing that this slide shows is, it shows all of, well, the primary operating funds and what we are budgeting in terms of an operating surplus or deficit. If it's a surplus, the number will be in black. If it's an operating deficit, it'll be in red, and it'll be in parentheses, demarcating the negative balance that we will be spending down. So, you'll notice that in several of our funds, we will actually be spending down more than we will be bringing in in revenue. In some cases, that is intentional. In some cases, it is not, but we are looking to continue to bring in revenue, and hopefully, we'll be able to offset that again with revenue and controlling our expenses. And then, finally, in the far right column, we have the cash balances for all of these funds, or the projected year-end cash balance for December 31st of 2020. So, what you're seeing here is that after, for example, the general fund, right now, we are projecting to spend down $258,000 from that fund's cash balance, but at the end of the year, despite that, we will still have $1.3 million left over in the general fund. So, ideally, we'd be putting money into the cash balance, but in this case, for next year, we're planning not to do so, but even so, we will have enough money in the cash balance to still fall within our local cash balance policy. The bond interest fund, that is a balanced fund. We will be spending money, we'll be spending, well, the $300,000 that's shown there is a surplus. This fund is a little unique. We will be transferring money into this fund so that we can make our debt payments. We will have a cash balance of zero, but in essence, we won't be carrying anything over. The airport fund, we'll be spending down $38,000. That's primarily because we will have an airport project, a small airport project that we will have, and the cash balance will be $21,000 in that fund. Major streets, we'll have a slight surplus, and so, we will carry that over to our cash balance of $25,000. Stormwater, on this fund, we are intentionally spending that one down because we don't generate enough revenue to pay for all the expenses that come out of that, but we do have $210,000 in cash that we are currently sitting on. And then, the industrial mill levy, again, it's been a concerted effort to spend down that fund a little bit over the years, and we're currently on $325,000 that we have there. Tourism, another fund that we are intentionally spending down, so we'll spend that one down about $85,000 to a cash balance of about $111,000. The water and sewer fund, the two of the big enterprise funds, will be carrying over cash into the next year, which is a good thing that we've been working very hard on. So, the water fund will be carrying about $60,000 over, and we'll have about a cash balance of $1.1 million, which has come a long ways. And then, the sewer fund, $119,000 surplus, leading to $471,000. Incidentally, when I was first hired with the city, the sewer fund had about $89,000 in cash, so we've come a long ways in our sewer fund. And then, refuse, $68,000 deficit with a cash balance of $423,000. So, this slide is really one of the most important slides in this budget, and the primary reason for that is because it tells taxpayers what the mill levy is going to look like for the upcoming budget year. We are projecting a flat mill levy. In fact, it will go down very slightly, from 53.013 mills to 53 mills, and it's projected because ultimately, we send these numbers to the county, and they do the final calculations and certify the final mill levy. But based upon the numbers that we've been provided, it looks like we'll be pretty much even keel for our mill levy. What that 53 mills gets, it will levy about almost $5 million in property taxes across the general fund, bond interest fund, the library fund, the airport fund, and the industrial mill levy fund, as you can see that breaking down right there. And then, the total budget authority, which is all of the revenue, including the ad valorem taxes for each of these funds, is shown there on the far right column under budget authority. So, that number represents the total amount of money that the city will be authorized to spend, assuming that the budget is approved as published. You'll note at the bottom of that column, the budget authority column, if you add up all those numbers, they do not add up to $32.9 million. The $32.9 million is the total budget authority for all funds. The only, the funds that are shown here are the funds that we have a mill levy that is assigned to. So, in essence, all of our funds, we are authorized to spend $32.9 million from a tax standpoint. It will be a little over $14 million all in for the projected mill levy funds. So, what does this mean for a household within the city of Eldorado? If you're a single-family household with a house value of about $150,000, then your ad valorem tax liability for the year will be about $914. If your house is about $350,000 in assessed valuation, it'll be about $2,133. And then, on the other side of that, the commercial valuation is based on a 70% And then, on the other side of that, the commercial valuation is based on a seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar and a twenty-four million dollar building for both commercial and industrial, so you can see the liabilities there. So, that's, that, those are the mill levies that we have in our budget for this upcoming year. I'm gonna go real briefly through several of these funds. The general fund, as I mentioned, will be spending down some cash balance. Personnel-related expenses increased by about four-hundred thousand dollars, but as I mentioned, we are projecting at the end of the year to have a fund balance of one-point-three million dollars. The bond interest fund will have a primary payments out of that for debt payments of about one-point-eight million dollars, which you can see in the expenses from 2020. We will be spending down the cash balance by about three-hundred thousand dollars, and we'll be transferring into this fund some money from the general fund to offset some of those expenses as well. Water fund, good news on the water fund side. We are planning a one-hundred-thousand-dollar reduction to readiness to serve that will be coming before the city commission for URL's review and approval in the coming months. So, that can be effective come January first. And then, as a result of the paying down the lake debt, the other thing that we are gonna do is we're going to invest a hundred thousand dollars in water infrastructure investments, beginning next year and continuing for a number of years. The one thing that I will point out on this slide, as you can see, it looks like 2019 was a little crazy with revenue and expenses. And that's because we transferred about eight-point-three million dollars into the water fund only to then pay it out as we paid off stages two and three of our lake debt that we had done earlier this year. So, that's why 2019 looks like we spent, or generated a lot of revenue and spent it, because we did. But that's kind of an anomaly of sorts. Sewer fund, we're not planning a rate increase. And one of the other things that we're going to do as a result of the lake debt prepayment is we're gonna be transferring a hundred thousand dollars from the water fund to the sewer fund, which will again allow for major infrastructure investments over the years. And we're also gonna invest thirty-five thousand dollars for maintenance projects. These would be like your cure-in-place, cure-in-place piping and even some manhole rehab work that needs to be done. So, that's in addition to the hundred thousand dollars. So, all in, the sewer fund will be spending about a hundred-and-thirty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars on maintenance projects on our aging sewer system. The refuse department, again, no rate increase is projected for this fund. We may be investing in new trash containers, depending on what we decide to do with recycling. And there is a possibility of a new billing structure that we will be potentially discussing here in the, in the next few weeks. You'll notice that in 2019, we do have the purchase of a roll-off truck and recycling baler. We're currently looking at those and determining if we are gonna, in fact, do those or if we're gonna hold off a little bit on that. So, just a couple of summaries on some important funds that we have. The street sales tax fund, we budget six-hundred thousand dollars out of that fund every year. Five-hundred thousand dollars goes to our mill and overlay program and a hundred thousand dollars to minor maintenance, which would be like crack sealing and pothole patching. So, we're gonna continue that again next year. The excess sales tax fund, next year, the excess sales tax committee will have three-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars to allocate to various municipal projects. The city commission will be discussing that here before too long. The industrial mill levy fund, it has an allocation of a hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars, which serves as a contribution match for El Dorado Inc. And the economic development sales tax fund has an annual appropriation of a hundred thousand dollars from the one-cent sales tax for unspecified economic development initiatives that we have available as needed. The excess sales tax projects that are presently being recommended by the excess sales tax committee are included here. The total of, is about three-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand dollars in projects. So, that's what's currently recommended. We're also looking to replace some of our vehicles and equipment. These replacements come out of our vehicle and equipment reserve fund, which is actually not a budgeted fund. It's a cash fund that we have that is included in the budget documents, but it's not an actual mill levy-sponsored fund. Next year, we're looking to replace two police patrol vehicles, a two-ton truck and a mid-sized truck between one and a half and three-quarters ton. Incidentally, because this is not a budgeted fund, if one of our pieces of equipment breaks down at any point in the year, we can always tap into this fund and replace it. So, that gives us some flexibility throughout the year. So, that's the 2020 proposed budget in a very broad nutshell. I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, David. Any questions from the commission? Certainly, as immaterial, we've been reviewing and looking at for the past several weeks, so. Appreciate everybody's work. If there are no questions from the commission, next process or next step in this process is to have a, open up for public hearing. So, I will do that now. We'll open up for public hearing on the 2020 budget for the city of El Dorado. Seeing no one approaching the podium to speak, we'll close the public hearing and move on to actions. If there's any conversation or other discussion, it's from the city commission. If there are none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the 2020 budget as published and direct staff to send the budget to the county clerk for certification.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Budget is for nineteen, for budget for nineteen twenty. Budget for 2020 is approved. Thank you. Thanks again for everybody's work.
One thing I will note, before you all leave, the budget is one of the things that we need the entire commission to sign. So, before you leave, we'll need you to sign the certification sheet so we can get that over to the county.
That's in this envelope here?
I believe so, yes.
No. Budget's not in here, but.
It's coming. I just realized it's sitting on the front of my desk.
Okay, thank you. Alright, don't get away without signing that, everybody, and then you'll trace down Matt for his signature. Or since he was not voting, was he signed?
He won't sign because he wasn't here to vote, and so, but we'll just write absent on his.
Alright, thank you. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the 2020 sales tax allocation. And I think in light of our discussions leading up to tonight, I'd like to table that until Commissioner Guthrie is here to join us for the vote and the conversation. If there's not any, any opposed that, then I'd like to see that table for our next meeting. Is that agreeable to everybody?
Do you need a motion?
Need a motion to table that?
Sure.
You want one? So, I'd like a motion to table this topic.
I move to table the reallocation of the excess sales tax funds.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion to table. Moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries four to zero to table that topic for next meeting. Moving on to Uniform Public Defense Code and the Standard Traffic Ordinance, UPOC and STO.
So, the Uniform Public Defense Code and the Standard Traffic Ordinance are the two documents that, in essence, codify any legislative changes that the legislature makes to both of these codified documents. So, anyway, the, so the state legislature approves the Uniform Public Defense Code and the Standard Traffic Ordinance. And if they modify any or make any changes to those two documents, it's called the legislative session. Cities then have to re, or yeah, reapprove those documents or the new addition so they can codify the new laws, and then our police department can then enforce those codes. If you would like to reference the memo that Tabitha's put together, it kind of summarizes all the changes, but there are many, and we probably won't have the time to go through them all. But in essence, it takes all of the changes from the legislative session and incorporates them into one document. So, in essence, before you, today, we have two items, again, the Uniform Public Defense Code and the Standard Traffic Defense, I'm sorry, Standard Traffic Ordinance for your consideration.
And there's really no discussion because the legislature didn't.
Yeah, some cities do actually adopt amendments above and beyond what the state has. We have not done so, so in some cases, you would, you have some local amendments as well, but in our case, we don't have any.
We adopt these, and these are the bare minimums.
Can we make amendments at any time?
Uh, we can.
Okay.
Staff is not really.
Okay.
Upon review, we have to.
But if we saw a need, we could, okay.
Yeah, that illegal bingo might be a biggie.
Should your conversation about texting and driving continue? Said that would be the amendment.
Right, that's right, okay. Okay. Reading through this list, anybody have any questions or comments about anything on here that wants more clarification? If there are none, I would entertain motions.
Numbers, please.
G thirteen oh eight, thirteen oh nine.
I move that ordinance number G one-three-zero-eight and ordinance amending section one-zero-point-zero-four-point-zero-one-zero of the El Dorado Municipal Code pertaining to traffic and referencing the standard traffic ordinance for Kansas City's Edition 2019 be passed and approved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further comment? If none, roll call.
Fisher Backwood.
Yes.
Fisher Wilkinson.
Yes.
Mary Haines.
Yes.
Fisher Guthrie's absent. Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Great. Motion passes four to zero. I need a motion now for the Uniform Public Defense Code. Ordinance G thirteen oh nine.
I move that ordinance number G one-three-zero-nine and ordinance amending section nine-point-zero-four-point-zero-one-zero of the El Dorado Municipal Code pertaining to traffic and referencing the Uniform Public Defense Code for Kansas City's Edition 2019 be passed and approved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further question or comment? If none, roll call.
Fisher Wilkinson.
Yes.
Mary Haines.
Yes.
Fisher Guthrie's absent. Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
And Fisher Backwood.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the Hazards Mitigation Plan, review of the Hazards Mitigation. Is somebody here to speak to that first?
Sure, I can speak to that. The Hazard Mitigation Plan is a process that the city, well, really, the county leads and guides as a result of FEMA. So, FEMA requires counties throughout the country to put together a hazard mitigation plan. And the primary purpose for that is to help allocate federal funds that may be allocated when disasters occur or when there's federal funds that are available for hazard mitigation. And so, the way this works, the county's actually been facilitating a process over the last several months, since, well, late 2018. And they take comments, they take, and city staff around the county gets to review the plan and make sure that it says what it needs to say. And then, ultimately, every city, including and the county, have to approve it. And then, it gets sent to FEMA and they review and approve it as a result of that. And then, it sits there until such time as there's a federal disaster and federal funds are requested. So, we've gone through all the steps. The county has held all of the necessary meetings and reviews. And now, it's time for the local governing bodies to approve our participation in the Hazard Mitigation Plan. We can actually do our own Hazard Mitigation Plan, but to do so, we would have to do, we'd have to go through the process, which is fairly lengthy and substantive. And during that period of time, we would be ineligible for federal funding. So, many cities just allow the county to take the lead on that since they are the ones that are charged with emergency.
And that's when something would happen.
And, yep, there you go. So, before you is the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and we need you all to approve that so we can get that over to the county.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission? If there are none, I would entertain a motion. Resolution number?
Twenty-eight eighty-seven.
I move to approve resolution number twenty-eight eighty-seven, a resolution adopting the 2019-2024 Kansas Homeland Security Region G Hazard Mitigation Plan as the Hazard Mitigation Plan for Butler County and direct the city manager to sign and send the letter of intent to the State Hazard Mitigation Officer.
Second.
I'll give it to Greg. Alright, it's been moved in second. Any further question or comment? None. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. That puts us to reports on our agenda.
This financial report, is this going out to the city or is it available to the citizens or?
It's available on the website. There is a news flash on the front page of the website, I believe, still. And it will direct them to that thing. They can, there's also some Facebook posts about it. And then, if they have any questions or would like an actual copy, they're free to contact me or Tammy at City Hall, and we will get them one.
Very, very nice.
Katie looks very hard on that.
She did a good job.
Yeah, looks nice. Well-written and very clear. Thank you.
I had an EFABC meeting.
Thank you.
And being the new kid on the block, I am still learning. So, I know that because football season is just around the corner, we will be meeting once a month instead of every few months to make sure everything's up and running. My other committee, Parks and Recs, we are meeting twenty-first of August, I believe, to kind of have a reorganization meeting of the advisory board. And that's it for me.
Greg?
And that EFABC meeting that we went to, they offered the stadium to Eureka to use during the months of September and October until they get their turf done on their field.
So, yeah, we get to add another football team to our, our schedule this year, and that's nice. I think spoke a little bit with, with the school district, with Norm Wilks today, a little bit. And I was sorry to miss the meeting. Thank you for filling in for me. But happy to hear that even though the college had offered to, to sponsor that, that everybody jumped in and said it needs to be. All three of us did say welcome to town, helped them out there, while they still recover from their tornado that took their football field out last year. It'd be amazing, why would a tornado take a football field out? But the field evidently, if I understand right, was so filled with glass that they couldn't play on it, so. At any rate, happy to, happy to host the Eureka tornadoes at our stadium.
When you're trying to change their mascot.
Yeah, I'm not gonna go there. The, so, thank you again for that. And I, you've been. The, so, thank you again for that, and I, you mentioned meeting week, meeting monthly. I believe they're going to start meeting monthly during the football season, so.
Yes.
I don't have any reports. I have a re, meeting coming up later this week, so report more on that, and I would say, from the bench here, our thoughts and prayers out to the city of El Paso and our neighbors in Ohio, Dayton, thank you, oh wow, for that tragedy. As I listen to, quite frankly, as I listen to the mayors on the radio and NPR, just kind of, it chills up my spines, thinking that that would be a tough place to be in, so I would like to, I guess, say our thoughts and prayers to those communities. If I don't have anything else, city managers report.
Okay, I've got a couple of commission follow-ups. We're going to do some new stuff, so as things come up in a meeting, I'm going to bring them up in a meeting. So Commissioner Lewis asked a question about the honor camp and whether the wildlife parks can maintain that for the DM music class, and obviously the festival's over, but we did check in with them, and they stated that they were only going to mow the area that the festival required, so even though it has kind of made entrance into the park area, they weren't real interested in doing a whole lot of mowing around that area. In, in addition, the 12th Street Railroad Bridge that was brought up the other day, the railroad has to approve the signage that we were discussing, and they don't have any intention of, of placing that sign, so I guess that's where we're at on that. Tomorrow night, at, from five to eight P.M., the El Dorado Police Department invites everyone down to National Night Out at East Park, so come on down to a, the park for a fun-filled evening with the El Dorado Police Department, there'll be games, food, just a great opportunity to get out and meet the El Dorado Police Department and have a little bit of fun doing so. So again, that's tomorrow, August sixth, at East Park, from five to eight P.M. As previously announced, the Holly Frontier Western Celebration is August ninth through eleventh. It is August, and that means that the last day for the pool will be August eleventh, and then shortly after that, it's time for kids to go back to school, so the first day of school for USD four ninety will be August thirteenth, followed by the first day of school for USD three seven five on August fourteenth. We encourage everyone to please drive safe and kind of keep your eye out for kids that may be walking around, particularly in those first couple of weeks, as people get used to the different patterns and get used to different, the different times that they'll be seeing people out and about in the mornings and throughout the, throughout the days.
I've got a question for the chief. I noticed today on Third Street that, at the, in front of Blackmore Elementary Road on Third, I noticed the lights were, so when the lights are flashing, even though school isn't in session, does that mean that that twenty mile an hour, when those lights are flashing, is in force?
Are you talking about the new lights, the crosswalk itself?
Yes.
I believe those are probably going to be lit all the time. Time it was supposed to, and I have to ask Brad what the intent is there. The school zone is in effect. I think it's just sign on either end.
Okay, but when the signs are up, it's in effect, correct?
Yes, but that crosswalk, to your question, it's got the little LED strobes on it.
Correct.
I don't know if those are going to be on all the time or what. I saw them late this afternoon flashing, so...
I saw them, that's when I saw them.
I can't actually answer that question. They may just leave those flashing all the time for the crosswalk. We'll find out.
Okay, I was just curious, because you can sure see them.
Yeah, they're bright.
Yeah.
Uh, there will be a chamber ribbon cutting for White Eagle Credit Union on August thirteenth at four P.M. That's at their new location over there by BG Stadium, if you're interested in going to that. The, we, we're making pretty good progress on the test core project. They have poured, as you may have noticed, they've poured the other two cords, they've got them under tension, so you may hear about some cracking, but that's normal, the concrete will crack a little bit, but the purpose of the post-tension in the concrete will make sure that those cracks don't expand or anything, so they'll watch that, and then they'll come over at the end when it's all, when the post-tension's completed, and they'll put the surfacing on, and they'll get the painting on, and so we should be, we should be good to go according to schedule. The weather's cooperating relatively well, and so we're anticipating to have that done by the time it was, is projected to be done. Let's see here, you may notice that the water may smell a little different, and it may taste a little different. This is our free chlorine season, that will last from about now to the end of the month, and we have to do that in order to meet regulatory compliance with KDHE. So during that period of time, just, if you do smell chlorine, it's, it's normal, it's part of our normal plant operations as we maneuver through the free chlorine period that we're, we're currently in right now. Let's see, and wanted to let everybody know that we will be doing some major maintenance work, which is our mill and overlay program, coming up here in the next few weeks. We'll be milling and overlaying Haverhill from Tuanda to Central. We'll also be doing Sixth Avenue from Constant Creek to El Reiko, and we'll be doing some of the neighborhood streets around Denver, south of Central, and those projects are all part of our street sales tax that the city allocates five hundred thousand dollars towards. So that'll be coming soon to a street near you. And then finally, wanted to let everybody know that we continue to make improvements or progress on our park projects that we have going on. In fact, you may be seeing some work on some shel, the shelters in Summit Park here soon, and then once that park's done, we'll be transitioning over to Graham Park, where we're going to be building some shelters and a bathroom, as well as a basketball court. So good things are coming to parks throughout the city. With that, I will take any questions that may have.
Nice new shelter there at East Park. We had church in the park on Sunday. The only thing missing were the big fans.
Oh, yeah.
But aside from that, I like the recycled picnic tables. Those are good, steady, sturdy, so it was nice.
Other questions? Let's see, David? None, and an executive session, so next on our agenda, next on our agenda is consideration for German.
I just answered your question.
Those are going to be flashing any time the school zones are, so it's the same time schedule as all the other school zones on that crosswalk.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Move in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries four to zero, we are adjourned. Don't get away, we need...